Board of Commissioners, would you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm Barb Lewis, President. To my left is our Vice President Jeff Benton. To my right is fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill, our Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrator Don Houston, and I see our deputy, other Deputy Administrator beyond the doors, that's Eric Hostetler, and he is also our Counsel. We have our Clerks with us, Brandy Wilson and Jennifer Wallraven. We can begin.
Resolution number 25-654, in the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held August 18th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-654. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any actual public comment today, so that brings us to item number three, Resolution Number 25-655, in the matter of approving purchase orders and announce certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 0827 and memo transfers in batch number MT APR 0827.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-655. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution Number 25-656, in the matter of changing the location of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners session for Monday, September 15th, 2025, to the Delaware County Fairgrounds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
I just wanted to comment, there's so many traditionally every year, and it seems like we just did it the other day. It sounds like it's so bad.
All right, yes, so we'll be at the fair then, on the 18th. Okay, go ahead.
Vote on motion 25-656. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution Number 25-657, in the matter of canceling the Delaware County Board of Commissioners session scheduled for Thursday, September 18th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-657. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution Number 25-658, in the matter of accepting for consideration the amendment to the petition for the warrant number 129 drainage improvement petition.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-658. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution Number 25-659, in the matter of honoring the Olentangie Liberty High School Girls Lacrosse Team.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I bet we have someone here. Would anyone like to speak?
Good morning, I'm Jack Fetti, the Deputy Superintendent for Olentangie. Coach Bosco and some of his athletes are here if I can invite them up.
Oh, absolutely.
That'd be great.
Please.
So these are the Representatives of the Liberty High School Girls Lacrosse Team, two-time back-to-back state champions.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank, yeah, thank you. The team had a, has had two great seasons, overcame a lot of adversity to win two state championships, and we're proud to represent Delaware County. I brought the captains for this upcoming season. I'll have them introduce themselves, but thank you.
And feel free to add anything when you introduce yourself too, about the team or anything you'd like to say.
My name's Megan, I'm a senior, I play midfield, and I'm playing lacrosse at Ohio State next year.
Oh, wow.
Great, great.
Great.
My name is Maggie, I'm a senior this year. I play defense and I am committed to Kent State, so I'll be there next year.
Congratulations, wow.
Hi, my name's Aubrey, I'm a senior, I play tac, and I'm committed to Rider University next year.
Oh, my gosh.
Great.
Hi, I'm Morgan Cahill, I'm a senior, and I play defense.
Oh, my gosh, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, the girl, yeah, like I said, these, these four are, will be seniors now, and captains for this upcoming season, so we'll see how things go for this year, but they're great leaders, and hopefully we can be back next year.
Absolutely, absolutely. Would, would anybody like to add anything about the team?
Season?
Season.
Last year's season?
Yeah.
Yes.
Last year, it was really difficult, like the season, our schedule was way harder than it was the year prior, so we just worked really hard, we ran a lot, there was a lot going on all the time, but we worked really hard and we pushed through our season. It was a really long season, but it was really fun, and it worked, it paid off.
It surely did.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, I'll add just a final couple notes. We finished as the number-one team in the state of Ohio, we finished as the number-one team in the Midwest region, and MaxPreps.com, which is a ranking system for girls lacrosse, we ended eighth in the country.
Oh, my goodness.
Quite an accomplishment for these, for the team.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, boy, congratulations.
You were so bashful, I had to pull that number one out of the way. You got a very, very bashful.
So who did you beat in the finals? The last two years, we've, we beat Upper Arlington. Oh, both years? Yeah, and then, what, three years ago, we lost to Upper Arlington, so we, we lost in '23, and then won the last two years. So it's been, it's become quite a rivalry. Yeah. How many girls lacrosse teams are there in the state? There's roughly 150 teams in the state, which is, I think it's one of the fastest-growing high school girl sports in the country, and certainly in Ohio as well.
Do they all play in one class, or is it?
There's two divi, there, yeah, there's two divisions.
So how many is in the class you put?
Yeah, we're in the big school, or the Division One classification, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Wow, wow, well, what, yeah.
Congratulations on the championships, back-to-back is incredible feat. Thank you so much. You all worked very hard to get that. Yeah. And, you know, you played very competitively, and congratulations, and we're very proud of you, it's just great. Thank you.
And you're gonna make it three in a row, correct?
That's, that's the goal.
Oh, my gosh. No, we really appreciate your coming in today, your, your time. The school has started, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, they got out of school today.
Oh, my gosh, you're missing something. Yes, yes, okay. Why don't we pass the resolution, and then I'll read the proclamation too? And, and just please remain standing through all this, thanks.
Resolution Number 25-659. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
And I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Delaware County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize the athletic excellence and outstanding sportsmanship demonstrated by the Olentangie Liberty High School Girls Lacrosse Team during their title-winning 2025 season, and whereas in their third consecutive appearance at the state championship, the Patriots defeated Upper Arlington in a thrilling double overtime win. Oh, my gosh. Becoming the first Liberty High School team to win back-to-back state championships, and whereas the team set a new school record when they concluded the season with an extraordinary 23 wins and only one loss. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delaware County Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates the Olentangie Liberty Girls Lacrosse Team on winning the 2025 state championship, and applauds the pride, perseverance, and sportsmanship they have demonstrated, both on and off the field throughout the record-setting season, and it's signed by Commissioners Jeff Benton, Barb Lewis, and Gary Merrill. And why don't we get a picture?
All right, for one more, ready? One, two. Thanks, guys.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, COVID. Oh, my gosh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, my gosh, best of luck. Thank you.
And we're not done.
No, we're not done.
Resolution Number 25-660, in the matter of honoring the Olentangie High School Boys Baseball Team.
So moved.
Second.
So, yes, thank you. So again, this, the last two years have been very successful for Olentangie schools, that we have had nine state championships in the last two years across our four high schools. Next, I'm bringing up Olentangie High School baseball coach Ryan Lucas and athletic director Johnny Hennessy.
Welcome.
Olentangie High School won the Division One State Baseball Championship this year.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks, Dr. Fetti, and thank you, guys. We appreciate this, the honor of coming here and being around you guys, and just this opportunity to be recognized, I think it's really cool. Too bad, I apologize for not having our players here. We're in school, so, and we graduated 12, so we have 12 guys that are already in college and packing up and moving, so.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
We couldn't bring them here, but I know that they're, they would be thrilled to be here, and they appreciate this, this recognition as well. So, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Any, any comments?
Yeah, I can talk about our season if you want.
Sure, oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, we, the la, the previous year, we went 10 and 15, so that just speaks to the, the character of our kids and their ability to, to overcome adversity, and just continue to show grit and get better and all those things. And we were young, so this year, we went 24 and 7. We actually won our last 16 games in a row, which is pretty remarkable. We ended up beating Springboro in the state championship game, 2 to 1. The whole experience was pretty cool, pretty, pretty awesome. Our, one of our players, his dad is the manager for the Columbus Clippers, so we had the luxury of using their field before we went to Akron for the tournament. So our kids gotta go on Huntington Field and practice and do the whole deal, and we had the police escort, we had the whole thing. So then we go up to Akron, and another neat story was my son, who's 12, his baseball team just happened to be in Canton the same weekend we were in Canton for the state tournament. So they were playing at the exact same time, and they could be part of it as well, and our varsity team and that, and his team, those kids have really connected throughout the whole spring and developed a great bond. So our varsity guys and that 12-year-old team knew each other, so they were together that whole weekend and, and being part of it. So, the whole experience was awesome, it was unbelievable. I think the thing that I was most proud of is how connected our entire program was, from players, coaches, administration, but our, our parents, our boosters, just everybody was one, and I've, that's hard to do, especially in education, to have everybody to, everybody knew the role and everybody just kinda executed and just did what they needed to do. So, I thought that was pretty, pretty neat for that whole experience. So we're really proud of our kids.
Oh, my gosh, sounds like good coaching.
No, I don't think so. Well, the year before, I was a bad coach. This year, I was a good coach.
What position you played?
So I'm Johnny Hennessy. Yeah, I, I'm the athletic director at Olentangie High School.
Oh, okay. If my information, math is correct, you were eight and seven before you went on the 16-game winning streak.
Yes.
It's pretty impressive.
So we, yeah, we, yeah, we were eight and seven, and, and we played some really tough teams at the beginning of the year, and we, we got challenged there, but our kids, and it speaks to the character that they have, and we have really good players too, so they figured out how to overcome that stuff and, and figure it out, and we ended up winning 16 in a row. In athletics, once you start winning, you develop confidence, and you have good players.
True.
Then all of a sudden, you can do a lot of things. In a place like Olentangie, that has the resources and all those types of things, obviously, Dr. Fetti said that we had not, what was it, nine state championships, so it's called, the, the culture, the, the whole area is rich in high-level play. So when you, when you develop confidence and, and team chemistry like we had, you can do anything that you put your.
We went 16 in a row in baseball, you must have pretty good pitching.
Yeah, we had really good pitching. So, we ended up, the whole state tur, or the whole tournament, we scored 34 runs and only gave up five. So that was all the way from the district semi to the state championship, and our team ERA during that time was a .525 ERA. So, yeah, our pitching was really good, our team defense was really good, and we got some big hits when we needed to get big hits to win it, so. It was neat.
How, how many D1 baseball?
So I got asked that question when I was on the field in Canton for the state Final Four, and we're playing Lakota West, and Lakota West was really good. That was the best team we played all year. And they had some guys, like they had a couple, like D1 commits, and, so the, I'm getting in, I'm getting interviewed by the Cincinnati Enquirer, and that's what he asked me, "How many D1 guys you have?" I'm like, "None." Like, we had a couple kids going to Ohio Northern, a couple kids going to Bluffton, which is smaller schools. We just had a bunch of guys that really committed to the team, and, and obviously, were talented, and we have younger players that are really good. We have a sophomore pitcher who, he's a junior this year, he was our number-one pitcher, so he's going to be a D1 guy, but the seniors and the whole team, we had nobody committed as D1, so it just speaks to the level of, like, team chemistry and all those types of things, and what you can do with just really good people in the program.
How many baseball teams are there in?
In the state?
D1 high schools?
Well, we have seven divisions, so it used to be four divisions, so I don't, I don't know the answer to how many teams, but we have seven divisions across the state.
I wanna say it's 64. I wanna say they spread 64 for D1, D2, and then they even up the rest between Divisions III and VII.
Yeah, that just shows you what an accomplishment it is to be the best of the biggest division with many, many teams, you know, really good teams.
And, and our whole community, I mean, the other three schools are elite at baseball, so it's a big-time baseball community. And every year, I mean, the previous year, Berlin was in the state Final Four in baseball. The year before that, Orange was in the state championship. Couple years before that, Liberty won the state championship, so it just speaks to the level of baseball in the community.
I think heading into the playoffs too, all four Olentangies were top-four seeds.
Yeah, we were all in the regional.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we were the top-four seeds, we were 1-4.
Top-four seeds headed into the playoffs, so.
Well, as athletic director, you have to be proud. There are so many good teams across all the schools.
Yeah, it, like, just like what Coach Lucas said, it was a fun ride overall, just seeing how the beginning of the season kinda, a little bit struggles, they're just trying to find themselves, and then once they hit that 16-game streak right there at the, at the end of the season, you could tell that the boys just kinda bought in, that they're enjoying the game, the love of the game and everything, and that cohesiveness between the players and the coaching staff and the parents and all that stuff. It, it is fun to watch, and it is great to really have them go through that type of an experience.
And this is, that was Johnny's first year as the athletic director, so I was like, man, in year one, you got a state championship.
Boy, congratulations.
What do you do for a year or two?
Oh, my gosh. You know, everything, I, the students and how they work together and overcome adversity and, and rise to the top, I mean, it really shows how important it is to be able to, to be a member of, of these teams. So, so, so much beyond just, you know, catching a ball.
Well, we always, we always say it's a privilege, it's a privilege.
Yes, yes.
It's not for everybody, but it's a privilege, and we have great people, that's the thing. We have great people, we have great parents, and that's why we have great kids, because we have great parents in our, in our program.
Olentangie's had a big representation over the last few months in this room.
Yes.
Which is really cool.
It is very cool.
Yes, oh, my gosh.
And congratulations to the girls behind that.
Yeah, yeah, it's proud of them.
Oh, my gosh, and Dr. Fetti, thank you so much too for coming in again and again, and, so you're welcome anytime, and we'll give the awards.
I'm looking forward to it, Matt.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, that's great. We'll do, vote on the resolution, and then I'll read the proclamation.
Vote on motion 25-660. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
All right, and whereas the Delaware County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize the excellence as athletes and representatives of their community that was demonstrated by the Olentangie High School Boys Baseball Team during their 2025 season, and whereas the Olentangie Braves earned their first state championship on June 15th, 2025, with a 2-1 defeat of Springboro High School in the Ohio High School Athletic Association Division One final game at Canal Park in Akron, whereas this was the second appearance of the Boys' Baseball State Tournament for the Olentangie Braves, and their first since 26, 2026, and, I'm sorry, 2006, and whereas the state championship was the crowning touch to a season that saw 24 wins, seven losses, and one tied game. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delaware County Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates the sportsmanship they have demonstrated throughout their championship season. It is signed by Commissioners Jeff Benton, Barb Lewis, and Gary Merrill. And then we'll get a picture.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask, we have a, a special guest here from Congressman Jordan's office, who has helped us so much with, with many things. If Carolyn, Carolyn Bick is here, and I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for all you do for us. We're in constant contact, and there is so much going on, so welcome.
Good morning, my name's Carolyn Bick, I'm a Deputy District Director for Congressman Jim Jordan. I just happen to have other meetings in Delaware this morning, so I thought I'd swing by early and say hello and see if we can help in any way.
Oh, thank you.
You have my phone numbers and email if you ever, ever need anything.
That's right, and you answer so promptly too, and above and beyond too, what, what we ask, and, and.
And, and you stay in touch, you're here a lot, so we appreciate that.
Try to, so, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we can proceed.
We are on item number nine, Resolution Number 25-661, in the matter of approving the Alpha Group of Delaware's payment of capital repairs to 1,000 Alpha Drive from the capital account established in the lease agreement for said property.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Oh, welcome.
My name's Jim Cordado, I'm the Director of Operations for the Alpha Group. I'm stepping in for our CEO today. She had a family emergency, but just here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions? No?
Good.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-661. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you for all you do at Alpha, you do a wonderful job, help so many people. Thanks for coming in, though.
Resolution Number 25-662, in the matter of accepting the recommendation of the Delaware County Tax and Cents of Review Councils for tax year 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jonathan Gabbit, Delaware County Economic Development Coordinator. Tax and Cents of Review Councils for both Liberty and Orange, met on August 5th this year, and reviewed all the tax exemptions in the county in both of those townships, and they voted to recommend the continuation of all of them, all of the above.
Okay, any questions? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-662. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Resolution Number 25-663, in the matter of adopting the Community Development Block Grant Citizen Participation Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners, Justin Alvey, Director of Finance. Again, this request has been submitted for the adoption of the Citizen Participation Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and this is a compliance requirement from HUD.
Okay, vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-663. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution Number 25-664, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $250,051.51 for the purpose of paying for the property owner's portion in anticipation of the collection of special assessments of the cost of improving the Griffith number 391 watershed drainage area between certain termini by acquiring any required interest in real property, clearing obstructions, deepening, widening, reshaping, and straightening, tilling, seeding, controlling erosion, and otherwise improving the same together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Oh, my gosh.
Great, thanks, Jennifer. So Commissioners, this is just a request for the issuance of debt on the Griffith 391 ditch project. Again, the principal amount will be around $215,000. The interest rate is 4.6%, and it will last for over eight years.
Okay, vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-664. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution Number 25-665, in the matter of approving supplemental appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thanks, Commissioners. This third item for the supplemental appropriations, it's being requested primarily for upcoming construction contracts for the Franklin and Rybov ditch projects.
Okay, vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-665. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution Number 25-666, in the matter of approving the final schedule of construction assessments for the Griffith number 391 drainage improvement project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thanks, Commissioners. For this item, this will authorize the special assessments for the Griffith 391 project. So when these revenues are received, these will be used to pay the debt service on the debt.
Okay, vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-666. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution Number 25-667, in the matter of approving a professional services agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Harrison Haven Excavating for the installation of conduit and fiber optic cabling.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thanks, Commissioners. For this last item, this is a contract request to install a conduit and fiber that'll connect the Dog Warden and Sheriff's Training Academy to the county's network.
Okay, vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-667. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, please.
Thanks, Justin.
Resolution Number 25-668, in the matter of ranking the proposals submitted for the review and remediation of the Delaware County Ohio web site to ensure compliance with Americans Disability Act requirements for web accessibility.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have before you the ranking resolution as a result of the review and work done by the review committee, which included myself, Eric Whites, Ron Clayton from the IT Department, and Jamie Hopps from the Sheriff's Office, and we determined that the vendor, we received 15 proposals in total from around the country, and the one that we are recommending is most advantageous comes from A360 Enterprises LLC, doing business as a client, and we recommend your approval.
Okay. I know you had a good explanation that you gave for us, it sounds like a really good company.
I have a comment.
Yes.
350, 370, 380,000 is a lot of money to update our websites, and I'm concerned about the cost to our taxpayers, and I have asked our lobbyist with CCO to look into it. Frankly, they did not know a lot about it. They've reached out to NACO, and I'm gonna read the statement from NACO, just for the record, and Carolyn, I'm gonna make a copy of this available to you. This came from Rachel, who's also a CCO, but it came ultimately from NACO. "Thanks for your outreach. To respond to the Commissioners' question," that was a question, a question I raised, "about the rulemaking, this is indeed an active rule that we have not heard will be modified by the new administration. The deadline to comply for counties with 50,000 or more residents is April 26th, 2026." But I think there's some dispute, of course, of 24th to 26th, this says 26th. Regardless, we're talking two days, and then the, those 50,000, below 50,000, there's another year for them to comply. "The quote for services appears to be within the range," again, this comes from NACO, "within the range of what we would expect for this type of work, and I can check with other, our IT network to see what quotes other counties are receiving to comply with the rule. I'm happy to do that, and we'll circle back. This is an area of advocacy for NACO where we are seeking additional flexibilities from the US Department of Justice." the U.S. Department of Justice. With respect to implementation debt timeline, NACO advocated against this rulemaking in 2023 on the basis of it being an unfunded mandate," which obviously it is, "but the administration at the time decided to move the rule forward, and we understand the cost to counties could be significant as they seek remediation. If our cost is 350, 370, 380,000 dollars, multiply that times every county in Ohio, multiply it times every county in this country, and every parish in Louisiana, to be consistent here, and a little humor, and every village and every city, this cost will be substantial." Now maybe we're affected more, maybe our sites are a little more sophisticated. I am even gonna ask, while we go through the process of evaluating and negotiating with the number-one recommendation here, that we also put together a group, Tracy, if you would take care of that, be my recommendation, and you and Jane, let's get the electors together, and maybe we'll have a little time here where we can hear from our state, or national representatives, and hopefully maybe get some clarity on this issue. This is a significant cost, and the electors, let's make sure they understand the costs associated with this. Do we make our websites more simple? Is this gonna be a cost up to keep upgraded over the years, or is it gonna be a one-time cost? But I think these two things can be done in tandem, and then when we come back to that vote in two to three weeks, hopefully we will be able to have more clarity about what our county's position should be. But I feel like I have to speak for the taxpayers. This is extremely expensive, and from the chair I sit in, I have a tough time understanding it. Those are my observations.
Yeah, if I could just add a comment as well, I'm glad Commissioner Merrill spoke up, because I was thinking the same thing. This is a whole lot of money, just for a review, as I understand it, of ADA compliance?
It's a review and to fix problems that are found.
Right, but again, it's just kind of a troubleshooting and review. And again, it's just for one law that is requiring this. And Commissioner Merrill mentioned ADA counties. Well, I assume this probably applies to towns and villages and townships and agencies and state agencies and so on. This could be enormous expense to the taxpayers, and I agree, I think it just really needs to be carefully considered as we move forward, and maybe a legislative solution is the answer. But you know, before we commit to spend the money, I think we really need to pursue alternatives as well.
I mean, we can certainly check with our elected officials, and that's why Carolyn is so valuable.
Yeah, exactly.
It was meant for you to be here today, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, yeah. I mean, obviously, we have to comply, though, with what the regulation, yeah, says, so... But I have no problem looking into it further.
But it could mean we have to simplify our websites, so I don't know the answer. I'm just asking if this group get together and evaluate other alternatives rather than this, I think it's 370, 380, but you felt you can negotiate down to around 350, but...
That's what I'm hoping I can, yes.
Yeah, so, but whichever figure, still, it's a substantial number. And again, I'll just say in closing here that multiply that all the counties in the country, and all the cities and villages, this is an extremely expensive project, that I sometimes wonder if people take that into consideration when they make these kind of decisions, so. And it was a prior administration, and my hope is the current administration will be proactive and take a quick look at this, because the clock is running, and April's gonna drive around the corner, it's not that far away, and it's gonna take some time, if we move down that road, it's gonna take some time to make that transition, evaluation transition, so.
Well, thanks for the effort.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Bringing it to our attention.
Go ahead, because we had to find out what...
Yeah, changes are phrase.
Sure.
Bringing it to our attention.
Yeah.
Do you know if cities, villages, other counties have started to do this?
Yes, they have, yeah. And that was the conference that I went to last month, that NACO was a sponsor of in Philadelphia, was addressing a lot of this issue, and people came from all over the country to it. So some of it depends on, because many jurisdictions have websites where they've contracted with a third party, they can hold that third party, you know, like a Civic Plus is an example of a company that provides a turnkey service for a website, and they host it on their own network, which is not something that we want to do. In those cases, that vendor is responsible for making sure that they're compliant. When we did our redesign in '27, 2018, it was slightly different standards that were required at the time, and we were compliant. Since then, they've upped the ante a little bit in terms of what standards are being applied, and that's where, you know, we have some exposure, some liability.
Jane, I will say that at CCO, and I just was at the symposium this weekend, the counties I spoke to, and many of them had been under 50,000, that could have been the reason. Very, very few, and frankly, I'm hard-pressed to think of one, that had any knowledge of this, among the Commissioners I spoke to. So, I don't make it right or wrong, I'm just saying, I'm not sure it's as well-known as, maybe in the circles you've traveled with that national group, they may be more educated than the average county, et cetera. But again, communication is one part of, the other part of it is just the overall cost this is going to put on all the government entities we spoke about.
Right, yeah, no, I think, I've definitely discussed this with Tracy and Eric in determining how seriously we should take this, and I think the risk, because there have been many lawsuits filed, when an organization is not in compliance, it could cost us significantly more than 380,000 if we were found to be non-compliant. So my feeling is, at this point in time, we have to proceed on the understanding that this is the law.
What I said was that during the time that you're negotiating, we are also gonna look at how we can maybe simplify the system and allow time at the federal level to look at it. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it if SARS don't line up, but I do think there's still work to be done before we come to a conclusion.
Commissioners, Tracy Davis, Administrator Osal, will note, this does affect private businesses too, so while we're talking about governmental entities, I just wanna note that it does affect private businesses as well. It's a requirement for everyone.
Basically, any business?
Yes, if you have a website and you do business with the public, you're required to follow the ADA compliance.
Yeah. I don't know if it's a situation as we find with public records violations, where somebody can monetize a violation to make money for themselves. I don't think that's the case here, but certainly there could be money to be made.
Well, we certainly had to look into it, and thank you so much for doing that, Jane, and the help Tracy and Eric, and just because other people didn't know about it is no excuse, you know, for not doing it.
Well, but I was gonna say, just because one of our, our federal government says we should do it, does not necessarily make it a good thing either.
Well, that's for sure. No one has seen that, but we needed to do our research, and you've done that, and I really appreciate it. Okay.
Vote?
Vote.
Vote on motion two-five-six-six-eight. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-six-six-nine, in the matter of approving a charitable agency committee for the charitable agency support policy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
And this is the biennial effort we have to undertake in order to provide our employees with the opportunity to contribute to charities in the area through their paychecks, and we are able to designate three organizations currently, they're United Way of Delaware County, People in Need, and the, what is the exact title?
It's the Court Appointed...
Court Appointed Special Advocates of Delaware and Union Counties. And this committee is the first step. Each, every two years, we select the three agencies. So we're soliciting applications right now, and then the committee is gonna meet in early October to go over them, and myself, Robert Martin from the Sheriff's Office, Saikila from the Auditor's Office, Natalie Fravel from Clerk of Courts, and Karen Watkins from our Probate Juvenile Court are members of that committee that we recommend you approve.
Jane, just so arbitrary, it's not the three, I think our software limits it to threes.
Correct. It is a limitation of our system.
It's not that we're saying we just want three, but that's...
Yeah, we do get inquiries, you know, as to why we can't expand the number, as some other jurisdictions in the area are able to do, but it is a limitation of our payroll accounting system.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-six-six-nine. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you, Jane.
Resolution number two-five-six-seven-zero, in the matter of approving the First Amendment to the 2024-2025 Agreement between the Delaware County Juvenile Court, the Board of Delaware County Commissioners, and the Board of Education of the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio for a truancy officer.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Karen Watkins, Fiscal Coordinator for the Juvenile Court. This is our annual agreement that we have with the EST to support their truancy officer that we have housed amongst the school districts here in Delaware County.
Okay. Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-six-seven-zero. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number two-five-six-seven-one, in the matter of accepting donations made to the Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Michael Roy, Finance Director, Sheriff's Office. This is a donation from Tanger Outlets to allow us to use it towards our employee awards recognition and banquet.
Okay. Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-six-seven-one. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number two-five-six-seven-two, in the matter of accepting an easement for sanitary sewer purposes from CF Archaeus.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Morning Commissioners, Tiffany Magg, Director of Environmental Services. So there was a slight adjustment in the alignment on the, it was an EPCOM project that's gonna be located on Concord Road, so I think you saw the vacated easement about a week ago here on session, so this is the new alignment, which is just a slight adjustment on the golf course.
Okay. Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-six-seven-two. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Director Magg has her monthly sewer update here, I just need to plug that in.
Right there. He changed it on me, and I didn't know. I've got it on my other one, I'll bring it for you.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. It's not a huge update, so.
Sorry for the delay.
I can start with the new total number of units, so 64 new connections occurred throughout the month of August, which haven't quite closed the month out yet, so kind of preliminary numbers. Forty-eight of those were residential homes, and 16 were multifamily, so that brings our total to right around 1,049 new connections for 2025. We had budgeted 1,481, so we're doing pretty well, you know, in comparison to what we had budgeted for the year as far as those numbers. I think August was just a little slower than what we've seen over the course of the summer, which is, you know, not all that unusual, the things have definitely still been strong, so.
You're welcome.
So if you wanna just click on the top one there, Cheshire Mills, this is, it's just east of the intersection of Africa Road and Cheshire Road, just kind of next to that, the ice cream shop over there. I think it's 15 units by Giangalo Builders, so kind of a small little development over there in that area. And then the Greens at North Star, if you're gonna click on that one, that's a subdivision agreement. This is an EPCOM development with 35 units, it's kind of infilling around another existing development in that area, so that's the first phase of that. And then Hyatt Meadows, Section 3, this has been on session previously, I think several months ago with the previous sections. It's on Hyatt's Road, kind of tributary to that new pump station that we have over there near 23, 67 units by Lifestyle Communities. And then the OSU Complex, this is over on Home Road. This is the first phase, which is 61 and a half units, which will be connecting, they're actually building both phases, or, I'm sorry, they're building Phase 1 and Phase 2, but only connecting in roughly half of that building for the near term. We will have to build a new 12-inch sewer extension as part of an agreement that we have between us, Ohio State, and Powell, to be able to service the second phase of that Ohio State complex, which we're just kind of starting to kick that project off here in the near term. And then Mercedes-Benz of Sunbury, this is a sewer acceptance here, you've seen this on session this past couple of months, so they're finally getting ready to develop that property as well, the sewer's ready to go. And then North Star Ivywood, 160 residential units by North Star. This is, once again, is kind of up there in the North Star area off of Wilson Road, so we've, you know, we've seen this project moving pretty quickly over the past several months. And then finally, Wood Crisscrossing, Section 6 and 7, 44 units in this section of the MI subdivision, this is, you know, they're building this one out pretty quickly as well. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have on the month of August.
Any questions? No?
Great.
Thank you.
A lot going on.
Thanks Tiffany.
Thanks Tiffany.
Item number 22, Resolution number two-five-six-seven-three, in the matter of approving the Platinum Subdivision for a Trinell CAD.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Morning, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer, excuse me, this project is located in Radnor Township off of Lawrence Road, it's a small, common access drive subdivision. Platt has been approved by the necessary local agencies, and we're recommending your approval.
Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-six-seven-three. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-six-seven-four, in the matter of approving a contract of sale and purchase with Pamela Everner Trustee of the Pamela S. Everner Trust Agreement for the project known as Del CR 51-0.33 County Line Road and Fancher Road.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We have reached agreement with the owner of the property at the intersection of County Line Road and Fancher Road for some additional right-of-way that will be needed for a project to build, a new single-lane roundabout at this intersection. You may recall that we were successful in obtaining funds through the state for several projects that are associated with the Intel and New Albany area technology developments. This is one of those, and so the cost of this, as well as the rest of the project, will be fully reimbursed by the state.
Okay. Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-six-seven-four. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-six-seven-five, in the matter of approving an owners' agreement for Berlin Farm West, Section 7.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Berlin Farm West is located just on the north side of Berlin Station Road, north of Berlin High School. Section 7 has 41 single-family lots, this is our standard owners' agreement that will provide for the street and stormwater infrastructure.
Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-six-seven-five. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-six-seven-six, in the matter of approving a vital work permit summary sheet.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
14 utility permits for you this morning, recommending approval.
Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-six-seven-six. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two five dash six seven seven. In the matter of accepting the roads, approving recommended speed limits, establishing stop conditions, and releasing the bond for Liberty Trails.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Liberty Trails is a small subdivision located off of Liberty Road. Street and stormwater improvements were completed about a year ago. Our staff has reviewed and done the final inspection, and we are recommending accepting the public streets and establishing the stop conditions and speed limits.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two five dash six seven seven, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
It is now past nine forty-five, so we may start our public hearing for consideration of a petition from the Berlin Township Board of Trustees requesting vacation of various roads within the Platte of Tank Town in Berlin Township, Delaware, Ohio, under special procedures of RC five 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 three point zero four five, and it is about ten twenty-two.
Okay. All right, so I go through the script here.
Correct.
All right. Welcome to the public hearing for the consideration of the vacation of various roads within the Platte of Tank Town in Berlin Township. There is a sign-in sheet circulating, and we ask that you would please sign the sheet to indicate your attendance. The Delaware County Board of Commissioners received a petition filed by the Berlin Township Trustees for the Delaware County Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution ordering the vacation of various roads within the Platte of Tank Town in Berlin Township, Delaware County, Ohio. First, we will hear a report from the county engineer, after which there'll be a time for questions from the board. The board will then hear from any interested residents that wish to testify. The board will acknowledge receipt of any written testimony before hearing live testimony. And we will first call all those wishing to testify in favor of the vacation, and then we'll call all those wishing to testify in opposition to the vacation. And before testifying, you will be asked to take an oath. The board will then close the hearing after all testimony and evidence has been presented. After listening to the testimony and the report of the engineer, the board will determine if the vacation requested by the petition would be for the public convenience or welfare. And welcome again to our county engineer.
Okay, thank you, good morning again, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. Our office has filed the, our report on this proposed vacation. I will not read it in its entirety, but certainly happy to answer any questions if I don't capture any of those during my summary. This petition to vacate some of the streets within Tank Town, which Tank, what Tank, excuse me, Tank Town was platted in eighteen fifty-eight, located off of Berlin Station Road. There was a previous vacation of some of those streets that were originally platted, that was done in nineteen sixty-seven. This petitioned vacation would take care of the rest of the unimproved streets. And I'll say that again, these are unimproved streets and alleys. There is no, there are no, there's no street mileage associated with these rights-of-way that were proposed to be vacated. Based on our review, there are no properties that would be left landlocked per se as a result of this, as a result of this vacation. There is actually a driveway that surfaces a number of the properties. That driveway is actually located on Berlin Township property, not, not platted right-of-way. That strip of land that is owned by Berlin Township is not being proposed for vacation. So the result of a vacation like this would be that half of the platted streets or alleys would revert to the abutting property owners. And so there would be effectively no change to the current driveway that comes off of Berlin Station Road. So with that, more than happy to answer any questions or answer any questions as a result of testimony.
Any questions?
I don't have any at this point.
I don't have any either.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any written?
We did not have any written testimony turned in for this project.
Okay, so I'll first call those wishing to testify in favor of the vacation. Anyone here wishing to testify in favor of the vacation? Okay, then I will call for anyone wishing to testify in opposition to the vacation. Anyone wishing to testify in opposition? Yes, sir, if you would come to the mic and I will swear you in.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'll swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes.
Okay, if you could just state your name and address, please.
I'm Robert Ferment. My address is twenty-seven fifty-three Berlin Station Road.
Okay.
The, I wasn't real sure on the existing lane that's there that runs parallel to the tracks. That's not going to be, or the section of road that, or, I got my paperwork, but is that going to be vacated?
Okay, I'll ask the engineer to address that.
Jen, would you be able to pull up the GIS or GNS or could I do that?
GIS?
Yes.
If you're, it should work from there. If you can pull that up from there.
If I could zero.
I can try and pull it up from there.
Bring up the map.
Okay.
We can see that. Shouldn't have done that. My geography skills are on display here, or lack thereof, I guess. Okay, so I'm clicking the parcel and it activated a number of other parcels, but you can see what's highlighted is essentially what's being proposed for vacation. The frontage along Berlin Station Road is not being petitioned for vacation. So it would only be this street, this alley that I'm following with my cursor, and then this street. You can see that this parcel right here, where there is the existing lane, that parcel is actually, is currently owned by the Berlin Township Board of Trustees. So that is not petitioned for vacation. And in fact, if your board does proceed with the vacation, one half of this street would actually revert to Berlin Township. So that lane would get, the strip lane would get a little bit wider as a result. So hopefully that answers your question, sir.
Okay, that's correct, right?
That is not petitioned for vacations, that would have no effect.
That's not going to be vacated then?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
I got better understanding now.
This is actually, the, the, the street was never built on this, this right-of-way. That lane was built at some, some point in the past, I don't know when that was.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it did.
Sure, okay, thank you. Okay, so are you opposed to the?
Yeah. The property that they're, if you're saying that's not, the lane, I'm saying, is, is open, but there's like thirty-five feet over on that lane where driveways, a couple driveways come through there. I wanted to make sure that was, that was still able to happen.
Okay, and that is able to happen from what I understand? Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else, is there anyone who wishes to testify in opposition to the vacation? Okay, we can go ahead and close the hearing.
All right, we'll note the time is ten thirty.
Right, right.
May I suggest, sir, after we read the motion to grant the petition?
Resolution number two five dash six seven eight. In the matter of granting the petition from the Berlin Township Board of Trustees requesting vacation of various roads within the Platte of Tank Town in Berlin Township, Delaware County, Ohio, under the special procedures of RC five 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 three point zero four five.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I think we've, we don't have any opposition and the engineer is recommending this in Berlin Township once, it sounds good, let's vote.
Vote on motion two five dash six seven eight. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
All right.
That brings us to the reconvening of our public hearing for consideration of levying drainage maintenance assessments apportioned according to tax value in lieu of permanent assessment-based procedure pursuant to Section six one three seven point one 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 of the Ohio Revised Code, and it's ten thirty-two.
Okay. I'll go ahead and and read the information on the continuation of the public hearing. Welcome to the continuation of the public hearing for the consideration of levying a drainage maintenance assessment apportioned according to tax value at a uniform millage rate on all lots within platted subdivisions in the Delaware County Drainage Maintenance Program. There's a sign-in sheet circulating that we would ask everyone to sign to indicate your attendance. And first we'll hear a review of the report from the Delaware County Engineer, after which there'll be a time for questions from the board. The board will then hear from any interested residents that wish to testify. The board will acknowledge receipt then of any written testimony before hearing live testimony. And then I'll first call those wishing to testify in favor of the change, and then I'll call those, on those wishing to testify in opposition of the change. Before testifying, I will ask you to take an oath. And after the testimony today and the close of the hearing of the board, the board will consider levying a drainage maintenance assessment apportioned according to tax value at a uniform millage rate on all lots within platted subdivisions in the Delaware County Drainage Maintenance Program. And therefore, I will defer to our county engineer, Chris Bowserman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for, for considering this matter. The issue that's before us is not to change where we collect drainage assessments, but to change how we collect those assessments and what the assessments are based on. So the, as you know, there's a procedure provided for in the Higher Revised Code when drainage improvements are made. The owners of the property can petition the Commissioners to have those placed on maintenance. And, and then those, the special assessments on those properties are collected to pay for the ongoing upkeep and maintenance and preventative maintenance associated with those facilities. So we currently calculate those based on a calculation of the benefit received based on the actual cost of the improvements that were put in place. And we report every year to you and ask you to consider what, what percentage of the total base amount should be collected for each project. So we're proposing to change that to a value-based assessment where, where the assessment is based on millage, on the, on the property value. Again, this isn't a property tax issue for all of the county. It's not even a property tax issue at all. It is a special assessment that is directly related to, to drainage improvements that have been, your board has been petitioned to consider. So one of the main reasons we're going this, we have over four hundred and nine residential subdivision projects, and the, the issue we're talking about, they would only apply to the residential subdivision, platted subdivision projects that are, that are currently on the drainage maintenance system. And there is some built-in, I would call unfairness or inequity in terms of the way we do that. People who are neighbors within a development will compare their assessment to their neighbor's assessment, and it can be very dramatically different. We'll talk a little bit about that going forward. But this, this changes that approach and, and does away with that inequity. So the other issue that we're rectifying, each of those individual projects, we are authorized and instructed by the code, we can build a safety net in each of our projects, up to twenty percent of the original cost of the drainage improvements in any given project. When you take over four hundred projects and combine that safety net all together, we have a larger amount of money there than needs to be. And so that, that total drainage fund has reached a level that we think we need to find a way to reduce that and spread the risk across all the projects. So that's basically where we're at. And I'm going to, Rob's going to talk a little bit about some of the specific statistics associated with how much we're assessing, how, and how that manifests itself in a change in the, in the approach. So Rob, if you'll talk about that, and I'll have a few closing comments.
Thank you.
All right, Chris, thank you. At the, the previous hearing, we, we went through this presentation in more detail. We'll try to get through this a little quicker, focusing on kind of the net end result of what we are proposing. Our proposal is to revise the current collection method to this value or millage-based assessment. What our recommendation is, is for a point three zero millage collection rate. That would replace the current collection method, this would not be in addition to. This would replace that collection and would result in a forty-six percent decrease in revenues collected. You just heard Chris say, we have reached the point, I think collectively, for those four hundred projects where we have sufficient reserve across those four hundred projects to spread the risk of any one or maybe even a few having any significant level of repairs that are needed, we can absorb that, I think, across the four hundred projects under this method that we're proposing. So effectively, we can take in less money each year. What we're proposing is essentially to bring in roughly what we're spending on annual maintenance. There's no need to accumulate further reserve at this time.
If, Rob, if that were to change, you could always increase it slightly if you had to, correct?
That is, that is correct, Commissioner. I, I mentioned this last time, we would not foresee any, any need to do that, certainly over the next few years. We think this collection rate is more than sufficient for that. So again, just looking at the current collection, we're bringing in roughly one point nine million dollars per year on those four hundred projects. You can see the distribution of what people currently pay. The majority of folks pay less than a hundred dollars a year, but you can still see significant portions still pay above a hundred, or above two hundred dollars per year. That would change dramatically, the vast majority under this proposal would pay less than one hundred dollars per year, over ninety percent, with only a small fraction paying, a very small fraction paying over two hundred dollars per year.
Commissioner Bowserman, did you wish to add anything? Or do you want to wait until later?
For the record, you should probably ask if anyone is here for a public comment.
Sure, no, I will. I just wondered if he wanted to follow up with, with what Rob said.
I don't know if he demoted you or gave you an elevation, public commissioner, so.
Oh, gosh, I did, oh, thank, oh.
I have no offense to that.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah.
If you have specific questions, I, you know, we were, we did, as Rob said.
Right, okay.
Very detailed presentation in the first hearing, so I don't want to
Okay, okay.
Go through that unnecessarily, but if you have any more questions, we'll be glad to address those.
Okay, okay. First, I just need to acknowledge, do we have any written testimony?
No written testimony.
Okay, all right. I'll call all those wishing to testify in favor of the change.
Good, good morning Commissioners, Brett Bacon, Deputy Administrator, Soil and Water Conservation District. Chris and Rob have, have given you an excellent summary of the whys and hows and the reasons that we've put this proposal in front of you. I just wanted to state that the Soil and Water District fully supports this proposal. Um, it, it obviously will create a, a fairer way to collect the necessary funds from those, those benefiting parcels, but it will also be a tremendous advantage to us in, uh, improving the efficiency with which we manage these, these four-hundred-plus. And, and that, that number's only gonna continue to grow as, as new subdivisions get platted and come online. Obviously, with the, the program will continue to grow. So our, our ability, both from, uh, an administrative and accounting standpoint, and the, the job that our field staff, you know, does in the, in managing or doing the actual physical work on these projects, will only benefit from this.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in favor of the change? Is there anyone wishing to testify in opposition to the change? Anyone wishing to testify in opposition? Okay. Uh, let's close the hearing then.
All right, we will note the time as ten forty-two.
Okay. And do we have any, uh, resolutions? Any other comments before we make a resolution? Or, I think we can probably make a resolution.
Yeah. Maybe if I, uh, make comments at this point?
Sure.
That'd be good.
Sure.
Uh, I think it's, it's, again, I support it, it's pretty straightforward. We talked about it at great length a couple weeks ago. Um, it, it goes into effect January twenty-sixth, January of twen, like, twenty-twenty-sixth, so it'd be on the next property tax cycle. Like, it's not a property tax, but it'll be on the property tax bills, so people would perceive it that way. It is a significant tax decrease. Um, again, it's a significant assessment decrease, it's not technically a property tax. So that's, that's good. I want to compliment the engineer and Soil and Water, recognizing, you know, that we, they, they just don't need the continuing stream of revenues, that they've built up sufficient reserves, and it provides administrative relief, and, and it's fair, uh, overall, so I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I just, a couple additions. First of all, I think, uh, Eric Hosteller is the one that brought this to your attention, so congrats to him. It does simplify the process, and I think, uh, uh, we, we're fiscally conservative as a county, and if there's ways to save money and, uh, make it more efficient for our taxpayers, we're always supportive of that. There's comments about, you know, your bill will be, maybe X number of persons will be over two-hundred, but that is a reduction of what they were paying. I think forty-six percent was the average reduction. So don't over, don't interpret two-hundred somehow an increase. It's not, uh, they were currently paying that, correct? It just, and, uh, it's just a change that we were doing the methodology on that and, uh, calculating it, and, uh, it makes for a more efficient system, and, uh, fully support it.
Okay, we better pass the resolution.
Resolution number two-five-six-seven-nine. In the matter of combining certain drainage improvements into a drainage maintenance district and single drainage maintenance fund, and levying drainage maintenance assessments apportioned according to tax value in lieu of permanent assessment-based procedure pursuant to Section six-one-three-seven-point-one-one-one of the Revised Code.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion two-five-six-seven-nine. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
And, uh...
This is to Administrator Report.
Commissioner Merrill?
In the spirit of time, I think, uh, we'll pass today.
All right. Commissioner Benton?
Uh, I'm gonna just, real quickly, a couple things. We had a zoo event the other day. Uh, it was very well-attended by local electeds. Um, it was a nice event. Um, SEBCO renewal meeting is tomorrow, uh, the board meeting for our healthcare renewal. Um, went to a Boardman Arts Park concert Saturday night. Very well-attended, very nice concert. Um, Land Bank, uh, you know, we've, we've got these grant programs, demolition and brownfield remediation grant programs. I'm starting to get some calls. I've met with, uh, Wesley, I met with the Delaware County Fairgrounds. Uh, there's a developer in Ostrander has a project, so the word is getting out that this funding is available, and, uh, hopefully this fall, you know, is the timeline for those grant applications to be submitted. And, uh, the CO triple-A met, uh, this week, yesterday, and I think they appointed Farah to the board. I haven't been able to verify that, Farah Wa, uh, who, uh, is, is source point. No, I, uh, we have three. Um, and the plan was for her to replace William as one of our three, 'cause we put, appointed him in interim, but I, I haven't verified it, but I think it happened yesterday, so, um, anyway, that's all I got.
And, uh, in interest of time, I'll report next time about our CCAO summer symposium. That was very good. All right, we have need, we do have need for executive session.
We do have need for executive session. Resolution number two-five-six-eight-zero. In the matter of adjourning into executive session for consideration of appointment of a public employee or public official.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion two-five-six-eight-zero. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We're now recessed.